Asking to ultimately keep that third column in from the right. I put an arrow. What number is that? Seventy-nine cents? Seventy-nine, that's our, call it the magic number. There's a slight dip there. In a few years, going out in, I go across the line, in 2025, down to seventy cents. That was one of the bullet points on page one. Building in whatever capacity we can, building that shelf to then get needed, layer on additional levy or bond collections to keep in phase two of a capital project plan.
Trevor, you said that this issue one, issue two, issue three have been had in place for a while. With looking at, looking at the four projects, does that, does this still?
I don't know yet. I'm looking towards my friend here.
Yeah.
The project manager is faster, it's on the new construction schedule in cash flow. I believe this will work, but we're working on it.
If that changes, I know you can't spell it out tonight. This, how, what impacts if we have to do issue one or issue two sooner?
Yeah, if we did, let's say we had to go from pre-sale plan to a two-sale plan, we would sell what we needed to today to make the assumption on what that sale amount for sale two would be, run some stress tests to see what would happen to the dollar, excuse me, to set the seventy-nine cents. If there would be a negative impact, ultimately it was your decision. But making a decision in light of full disclosure.
And we just have to balance that against, are we going to spend eighty-five percent of, does that, you have to go back to that?
Right, yeah. That's kind of our number one goal, that we always have to.
I think we could stay within three sales.
Okay.
And if assessed value comes in much faster than anticipated, or interest rates decrease dramatically, it may make sense to chop a third sale off, move faster. There is, and you can't quantify it, but obviously there is staff time involved in doing this. So there are some economies of scale of doing fewer bond sales versus more. So we weigh those things as we think about this.
And the dates aren't fixed in concrete, no, I mean.
Correct.
Because something could, a glitch could happen and we might not hit the front running quite as quickly as we thought on the four projects. So might need to postpone that last sale or adjust that amount.
Yes, this is, this thing is a living dream.
It's a, it's a plan that can change.
Yep. Yeah, so we have ultimate flexibility in the timing and things like that. So great question, great.
These are all estimates because as you said earlier, we need to figure out the construction cash flow schedule. It's more easier to be forecast. This just gives us an idea.
Yeah.
Nothing's set in stone because we don't know enough. That you're just giving us a framework for it.
Yes.
And initially, the only, the number that we're all going to set is definitely that first sale.
Right.
Right.
We have to go through the process and keep it steady and travel.
Lori, do you have any questions at this time?
I don't. I'm following along though.
Okay, thank you.
Are you looking at right now, the interest rate for first sales?
Mid, mid to high three percent range.
Okay. So what would, let's say when it comes time for the third sale, what would have to happen between now and then that maybe would be like twice that much? Like instead of two and a half or three percent, it just might have a six percent interest rate instead.
Right. Yeah, the very bottom of that page, page seven, excuse me, there's a line called net interest cost.
Yeah.
I have a fifty basis point or half a percent cushion on the first sale.
Okay.
About three ninety-two, so let's say it's four, you're right, right, do easy math. And then it gets to about three and a half-ish, and a percent on the next two. Really the big driver dividend is assessed value, right? And if assessed value comes in a ten percent again, instead of our guess at six, it really opens up flexibility. That's the big, the big lever.
So thanks for pointing that out. You see it played that in already.
Yeah, no break question. Yeah, it's tiny, I'm sorry.
It is tiny, you're too large.
And last but not least is page nine. There's a lot of detail on here, but this keeps Art, Karen and Trevor on track, right? We need to stay on track. So we're briefing you tonight of a work session. On March fourteenth, Cynthia Weed, your bond counselor, your bond lawyer, will brief you on the draft bond delegation resolution. Art, Karen and I have a copy of it. We'll review that in the next day or two. It's a fun thirty-plus page document, but it's very important. Think of it as the contract between you and investors, because that's what it is. So read it carefully. If you have questions, please reach out to us and we can help with that.
And puzzled by the term delegation resolution, that means like we're giving it to someone else?
Yes.
So explain that provision.
The, the, the bond delegation resolution gives a designated representative or two, which we are proposing be the superintendent and the chief financial officer, the ability to lock in the financing within certain parameters. So there are guardrails or bumpers that must be adhered to so they can move forward with locking in the bond sale, producing cash. locking in the bond sale, producing cash for the capital projects fund to move forward. Uh, those things would be an expiration of the, uh, an expiration date of the bond delegation resolution. It lasts for a specific period of time, uh, number one. A maximum borrowing cost, uh, included in that. If it was higher than that, we could move forward. We have to come back to you for authorization. A call feature, optional redemption feature in the bonds, uh, within ten and a half years. No, no later than ten and a half years from the date of issuance. Uh, you would need to embed an optional redemption feature, which allows you really the opportunity to possibly refinance the bonds in the future if market conditions allow. And there's, there are tax reasons why, um, Cynthia would prefer to have the bonds be callable versus non-callable. So, like your mortgage, you can basically pay it off at any time. These are a little different. The first ten years of maturity, the investors are, they know they're gonna receive their principal and interest payments. But after that, they have, you have the opportunity to take those bonds away from them, buy them back from investors. And if you can, if interest rates are low or swap them out if it's four percent and interest rates are three, then you save the differential and saves taxpayers' debt service costs.
How do you look for taxpayers by the bonds?
That is a wonderful question. We will brief, uh, the finance and audit committee in detail on March eighteenth on that topic. Um, they can call my desk directly. Uh, we are underwriting team, our sales team. Uh, we have a retail distribution agreement with Charles Schwab, we have a Schwab account. You can call them or go online. All of our new issue products, bond issues are listed there. Or if someone has a, a different broker dealer, they can always, you know, behind the scenes have traders and underwriters and salespeople talk to our desk and get bonds that way. So we can definitely put a retail priority on local residents to have access to the bonds, but they will be at market clearing prices. There is no special deal, but we can provide access.
Do you have an idea of what the increments will be of the individual bonds?
Yes, the minimum, uh, investment amount, uh, well, principal amount is five thousand. And, uh, this market's become very institutionalized over the years. It, uh, it takes some large institutions to put seventy million dollars, for example, uh, away to the, uh, to the end user. Uh, so you will see most likely some large property, casualty insurance companies, mutual funds, trust departments at banks, uh, maybe banks themselves buying multi-multi-million dollar pieces of, uh, bonds. It would take quite a few mom and pops to, uh, purchase seventy million and, you know, ten, five thousand, hundred thousand dollar pop. Cynthia will break this up, but the school board members are not allowed to purchase because it will be, through, yes, through your designated representatives, uh, in that delegation resolution, you are setting the borrowing cost, so there is.
So Trevor, will the board ever eventually approve the final purchase and sale of bonds at, at the end of the sale?
They will not. You will be briefed, uh, immediately on the results. So there's two ways. So if a bond delegation resolution is not to your liking, we can have, uh, a process where we sell the bonds on a board, uh, meeting date. Or you hold a special, and basically what we're getting to is we sell the bonds in the morning. Before the end of the day, you need to approve a resolution baking in all of the final approvals. So that could either be a special, uh, board meeting or a regular board meeting. The bond delegation res- uh, resolution, uh, there, at this point in my, uh, experience, there is only one school district that utilizes the method of coming in and convening after the bond sale to approve. And, uh, they're throwing me some hurdles currently with the timing of their bond sale. So I'm trying to, uh, have a discussion of really the benefit of the flexibility. But it's up to you.
Final, final question. Is it possible for, um, at least a board member or two to sit in or watch the bond sale?
Of course. Yes, for sure. This is a process and we welcome your. We welcome your participation.
And will we have a copy of the board delegation resolution prior to?
I believe that the agenda is going out tomorrow for the review and we will get a copy of the board resolution so that you can start to look at it, the draft. And that's the reason why we're only bringing it as a draft to the board study session next week. So, and we're having Cynthia's.
Just mission.
So that you can have conversation and you can ask any clarifying questions. And if that is not the direction we want, go give us direction as to what you would prefer. And Cynthia, you can really talk about that and have that discussion. And then we are, we are also including, um, we will, uh, be having Cynthia and Trevor at a finance and audit meeting scheduled for the eighteenth, where we will go over all of this in detail so that they are brought along. And, and then we will issue a report and we will put that on the website. So we want to share as much information about this process and get a copy. And then we will be scheduling a meeting with that committee to keep them up to date.
So one of the things in the past years that I complained about, about that committee, was that, uh, there wasn't a whole lot, in my opinion, accountability to that committee. And they never briefed the school board. So will that start soon?
If you want them to bring a report, we can have them bring a report. Or we can write up a report and that can be given.
I know it might be too, because as we're gonna always know everything, we'll know some things going on. But I think it would be nice to have the chair. So I would think it would be nice to have the chair of that committee come and brief the school board so that members of the community now that we're streaming it will go see that.
And that's the layout.
Yes, I'd like a framework that I would like to hear from them. That's the reason that they exist.
I know. Actually, this banned it for a while and it reconstituted it, so I would like to see the board.
I would agree with that, too.
One other question on the, on the, sorry.
No.
Second scene, I don't think. But, um, must this be adopted on our next, uh, sporting year, or can?
I, I, I have, yes, I have adoption right now on the, uh, on the plan on March twenty-eighth.
Oh, okay. So time for the finance committee and all.
Yeah. If that doesn't work, then definitely give us some feedbacks.
We wanted to set it up on this multiple stages of when we got the struggle tonight. Present to the board team, no action on the fourth, and then no action on the fourth, and two weeks later, we will have had multiple times to talk to your monitor to represent the board and then drop the resolution and why and, and before the chair election, before you're asked to act on it.
And we'll also have the finance and audit committee who will have reviewed it before number two. They'll have feedback and maybe consult the board how it can be set.
Great. Um, so kind of halfway through this page, uh, the other bold line item there, April first through the fourth, uh, we'll have a conversation with Moody's Investor Service, put our best foot forward and talk about the credit strengths of the district and aim to receive affirmation of the double A two. Uh, spring break I put on there, I know some folks are out and I wanna keep my eye on that. We've chosen April thirtieth as a bond sale date. I'm being extremely magical about that date, uh, but it does get us into the market rather rapidly. And we anticipate closing a few weeks later on May twenty-first. And that's the morning where Piper Jaffray wires the money into your capital projects fund. Around nine AM that morning, we'll have round number seventy, depending on what we, uh, ultimately decide. But let's just use seventy for, we've been talking about seventy million to the capital projects fund at nine-ish AM, on the twenty-first. That is what we're up to. Regarding the bond sale. So, uh, Karen has been great. We're working on putting together, uh, the operating document, which is called a preliminary official statement. Think of it as your prospectus to the investor world. Uh, and we'll have a draft of that for the finance and audit committee on March eighteen. So they can see that. And I, I think Marcia and Deb are both on that committee. Is that correct? So, uh, fortunately, this would sound very similar to, uh,
Then you want to isolate these.
Presentation for YouTube.
But I wanna do the bear questions.
Yeah, exactly. So, um, again, uh, feedback questions are, um, are welcome. Something later, go through with staff and.
Yeah, I just wanna say that, you know, I appreciate all the efforts over the past many years that Piper Jaffray has worked on putting together, whether it's a capital levy plan or a capital projects plan. All this time to obtain those and link all that effort, put these together, only to have them fail. And so we're really happy to have you on the team.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's, uh, it's partnership. It's, it's, it's a great situation. So again, congratulations. It's, uh, it's a very momentous occasion.
Is, is that fixed, the period, or that will change?
That could change. I don't anticipate it changing unless there are, uh, extreme market conditions that would, uh, push that date out. I don't know if we can bring it forward because there are certain kind of hurdles that we have to deal with. But yeah, I, I think that'll, that should.
Okay. Anything else on Art? Anything else on five point one?
No, it's just a pleasure to see this timeline and it's, uh, it's aggressive in terms of including the time we need to be able to have, uh, the finances to move forward. But at the same time, it's staying entirely within our original projected. That's nice to, you know, so. We're not being rushed by some negative market. We're not being pushed into some, uh, bad bottom market, et cetera. We're somebody trying to figure out where we're short on money or on anything to do with our projects. So it's a, it's a very comfortable kind of thing. I, I was saying to Trevor earlier, I, I do miss the old days in Washington. Remember when you, you had to fly into New York or somewhere to get your new bond rating? That was exhausting. About eighteen hours to get there and back and make a presentation and so forth. And I, I even miss the old days where you had bonds in your handbag.
And they put the coupons.
Now it's like, uh, you're depositing your check. You never see it. So I'll take it. It's, it's nice to be there. And it's, uh, it is a streamlined process for all the school districts and serves us well. So I'm very pleased.
Thank you, Trevor, and, uh, thanks for the partnership and the answering questions. And we'll answer them again from the inside out. So thank you for, for participation in that. All right, we will move on then to five point two. Get back to it. Is our school planning of number ten. Okay, Dr. Jarvis has some words for us.
Well, to start, not surprising, I guess, with a, a little statement to you. Another statement to the previous, uh, meeting. And I'd like to kind of pick up where that left off on, so I, I will remember the, uh, with respect to the facility planning, there really are two separate issues, but they're mixed in one conversation. The first issue is timing for school number ten. And that includes the purchase and reuse of the Boys and Girls Club and the proposed schoolwork choice concept. The second major issue is the short-term overcrowding problem for the fall of two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. Those two together have prompted people to mix and match the solutions depending on the needs and the interests that are touched on the closest. A third issue really, Henderson Bay High School is only an issue if that particular building space is considered a solution for overcrowding. The possibility that Ben raises the, uh, of adversely affecting Henderson Bay High School and we're mixing students of different age groups. In a way, there are subtopics to what do we want to do to handle the short-term overcrowding. So for the background, I will repeat a part of the information. I apologize to Gil many times. But the bond issue we proposed was to construct two new schools as well as expand Ardennesdale and Evergreen. And they resolved the overcrowding. Seventy-seven additional classrooms provide relief throughout the district. But that ultimate solution wasn't scheduled to be completed until the fall of two thousand twenty-two. Now with the purchase of the Boys and Girls Club building, that so, solution could be completed in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. Recent commentary in response to our explorations gives evidence to the passion and plea to find solutions quickly. Heavenly impacted Purdy and Discovery Elementary Schools are eagerly looking towards action this fall that might maximize immediately to their plight. The opponents urge that we look at any option that might offer short-term help. The district reviewed a multitude of solutions and combination of solutions. Ultimately, the recommendation was made to open school number ten in the fall with the Boys and Girls Club facility and to utilize Henderson Bay High School classrooms for the overcrowding. As we now take a step back to the alternatives, we continue to face the original issues. For two thousand nineteen, we need to find housing for seven additional classrooms depending on fall enrollment. Specific projected shortfalls include three classrooms at Discovery Elementary, two at Voyager, and one in each of Purdy and Harbor Heights. And additional two classrooms that we need to house the early childhood program that we currently house at the Boys and Girls Club. And a quick comment on background on that one. Those are actually the two, uh, programs that were housed at Harbor Heights until that portable burn. When that portable burn, uh, they were relocated to Boys and Girls Club. Now with the purchase of the Boys and Girls Club, we have those two also needing permanent housing. So I'd like to address really those two topics is the planning for number ten and then, uh, the short-term overcrowding, how it is all. And, and then what I would like to do is really open and have a, a conversation with the board about what would represent a couple of the priorities and be able to think those priorities back and come back to you with our consideration. So I'm doing this as, uh, really a, an opportunity for a study session to, to get to talk with you. Uh, on the next page that I provided you, it's, it's a very simple and, and it's, it could be added to, right now it says option, seven options that you look at. They've been reviewed. They just, they really represent the mix of what are we trying to do. So option number one really was the schoolwork choice scheme with a three-year phase-in. Started in two thousand nineteen with the opening. It would have, gives the nine classrooms or the Boys and Girls Club. It housed about a hundred and sixty students. And, uh, over the course of the next two years, as we added, uh, classrooms and put an addition on the school, it would grow by the fall of two thousand twenty-one to the full five hundred and fifty student, uh, elementary school. So that's, that's the original plan and that's the plan that's, that's been put forth here. But then I wanted to exemplify the, the kinds of choices that get mixed in and have mixed in the conversation. So option two would say if in fact you chose to use that facility for short-term housing and said rather than open school number ten in the fall of nineteen, I'm gonna open it in the fall of two thousand twenty. It would delay that the opening of number ten one year and would provide with nine classrooms available or something else. Option three is just a predictable third one, which is if you delay the full two years for the fall of two thousand twenty-one, when you had your addition complete and then opened the school all at once, we will have delayed the. you will have delayed the new school two years, but it will have a use in the meantime for, for short-term housing. So that's one type of option that you would have where you would look at and the issue would be what you see as critical and recommended to you in terms of you're opening the school, which is now known as number 10, and it's one of the two-year schools. When you look at option four, you look at a different part of the equation. And that is, it could be a non-choice school. Regardless of any of the other choices made, not to use the word fully, use it. They could open in 2019 and have a three-year phasing that the school that had a boundary there was now a school of choice. Option five blends the two issues. If you had a non-school choice school open in 2021 and you had two years to use the Boys and Girls Club for something else, this particular option five says you could make that the annex for the Discovery Elementary School for two years. And that operates that it should be, yeah, 2019, 2020, 2021. And that takes us to the fall of 21 when that new school opens and has a 550-student school. Option six is just an example of a different blend where you would say that the district school number 10, the new school number 10, is seen as a whole partner school with Discovery Elementary. An example would be, one would be a primary and one would be an intermediate school. One that's sort of K-2, and then it gets to 3 through 5. And if you began that in 2019, you would have more students when the addition was complete. So you would, you would have those nine classrooms that would represent probably two grades. And it would operate as a partner, part of Discovery Elementary. And yet would work its way to a fall, a fall going elementary. And then option number seven, to exemplify the Henderson Bay High School piece, was if you combined the Henderson Bay High School facility right from the beginning in 2019 and used that for those next two years in addition to the Boys and Girls Club, you would have basically the 16 classrooms that were at Henderson Bay High School and you'd have the nine at the Boys and Girls Club. And they would, those classrooms would be used as one unit for two years. And when the addition was finished in 2021, then Henderson Bay would be released back for other use, whatever that was. But you would, you would take the whole facility for two years. That could be used as either a school of choice or a non-choice. But it just exemplifies that you have nine classrooms that you can use for one, two years. And you've got the 16 at Henderson Bay, they can be used in combination. They can be used in combination with Discovery and they can be used with or without the choice. I would say that when we come back to this, I want to, I want to talk about the short-term first so that we get some of the ramifications that go with each of these options. And then when we come back to that, certainly we'll have some recommendations and some answers to your questions of some of the ins and outs of what might work and what might not work. But I did give that as an overview that part of the issue is really when you made the promise to open school number 10, one of the two new schools of the applicant school system. It was to open in the fall of 2022. There was to be a year-in-year-out in school number nine. That equation changed with the purchase of the Boys and Girls Club. And that's the main thing that I'm trying to feature is close it is. It gives us something we did not have when we originally proposed this in November of 2018. So now I'd like to talk about the short-term possibilities, how do we solve the shortage? From October, when I presented to the board the proposed bond issue in November, when it was adopted, we emphasized that the issue of growth, the issue of the number of classes in the schools, was a problem for the fall of 19 that would not be resolved by the bond issue to produce schools that fast. It would be a problem in the fall of 2020. The purchase of the Boys and Girls Club again has altered that slightly. But the real issue still remains that we have beyond the construction of school number 10. We have an issue with how do we solve the short-term. So I wanted to take you through a pretty realistic picture and we have tried to develop this. In the fall of 19, the best guess I can give you is, I'm quoting you, seven to 10. We know seven for sure. We're absolute. We really know nine because of the issue of the two early childhood programs that are displaced. We have the potential of at least one other depending on the kindergarten level. So let me deal very quickly. No matter what we do, we will be capping certain grades in certain schools. An example of that would be if we're going to plan on how to house five kindergartens at Discovery Elementary, then we simply won't cap it at five. And any other kindergarteners who would show up in the worst of the Discovery would go elsewhere. We won't, we won't forgive the sixth kindergarten.
That's even if kids, older siblings already in.
Sorry. The out and out, we would be capping certain grades at certain schools depending on their level. It might be over Harbor Heights, it might be second grade, it might be kindergarten at Discovery. But it would be when we're maxed out, we simply don't have another room to add another teacher at that, at that one. So I'm going to start with this model of the fall of 19, we need nine additional classrooms. I'm going to refer you for that through a document that is. It's a nice pyramid. And I'm going to pull the pyramid and ask you to follow with that because I'm going to talk about level one solutions. Level one solutions at the top of the pyramid, repurpose classrooms to general education special, general education specialist classroom. So we would take STEM music, art, and repurpose them to K-5. So the very first thing you see is use level one solutions. We would repurpose two specialist rooms at Voyager, one at Purdy, one at Harbor Heights, and one at Discovery. That would gain for us five classrooms in those five repurposed. They're the very, I believe, John, the very last of the specialist rooms.
And we have heard in science or art, music, or you know what specialist it is?
It could be various. There's, there's a different way, Voyager and Purdy would have some specialist classes that are in other schools that are to have classrooms.
At the end of the day, if we use this option, there will be no more specialist classes in our elementary schools. Classroom, sorry.
I'd care what, put in on some of the key schools. Most of the key private ones would be one.
But just for the one year, do the schools delete?
Two years.
Two years.
It is contemporary.
Yeah, and just to say one more thing that I, I want to represent if David Brooks was here or any member of the staff of Discovery would say, just remember when we're talking about level one, that, that takes care of where we put the kids. But one of the biggest issues here is just a small number of kids on the campus.
I have to hold you back on the lobby.
Okay.
I'm just trying to.
It's not lobby, it's context.
The question is, if we were using level one solutions, this would be the solution that we would have to gain these two classrooms at Voyager, this one at Purdy, this one at Harbor Heights, and this one at Discovery.
So that gives you five classrooms.
That's five. The math, of course, quickly says that we're still looking for nine, so we're short four. So then we have exhausted in, in terms of where the kids are and what we need. And I want to give you just a quick background. The simplest explanation of some of these is if we had five kindergartens and four first grades, this fall we will now need one more first grade. Those kids are already in the school. They're not new kids in the school. They're simply moving their classes up. And so this is, is kind of a hard step unless you're moving kids out of the school. This is why you do it. But then you move to level two solutions. And level two solutions on the pyramid are transfer programs to alternate location, to free spaces for K-5 general classroom use. Examples, highly capable pre-kindergarten, E-cap developmental. So now we look at level two solutions and say, what could be possible at Discovery? The first possibility there is the highly capable. There's a highly capable program that serves two, takes two classrooms, that serves Harbor Heights and Discovery. And so rather than having the half the kids that are home at Discovery and the half to come into Harbor Heights, we would reverse that, move those to Harbor Heights. That frees up two general classrooms at Discovery. The kids who are in the highly capable from Discovery are now on wheels to Harbor Heights. The kids who were from Harbor Heights and then going to Discovery get to stay home. So it serves the other half of that group. But the way we do that and the reason you can do that at this particular time is now that Harbor Heights has the luxury of sitting there with a couple empty classrooms. It's again back, if we totally burn down the portable. And when the replacement comes with two classrooms, we could put this program, at least we could furnish them with two more classrooms and they can figure out who goes where. So it doesn't require, it just fills in the two classrooms that used to be the early childhood and now become the highly capable at Harbor Heights. It frees two classrooms at Discovery and we're now up to, in addition to the one previously we added at Discovery, we're to the second, third one. So in essence, I've got that part. The second piece is that, it gets, it gets more tangled, but the reason those two portables existed was that we worked on the early childhood program.
They spoke out of fire.
There was a fire. We had the two early childhood programs housed at the Boys and Girls Club, so we still have to house those two. And if you transfer the early childhood program from the Boys and Girls Club to the Hudson, Henderson Bay High School. Henderson Bay High School was built with two early childhood spaces that were designed for that. You could house those two at Henderson Bay facility in the two rooms that were designed for early childhood. And you would have now all nine of those classrooms that were short. So that would, to recap, that you took two specialist rooms from Purdy. You took one from Purdy, one from Harbor Heights, one from Discovery. You moved classrooms in there. Those are specific to the locations where the shortfalls occurred. You then housed the highly capable and then you housed the early childhood, so you've met those, those nine. What I was emphasizing earlier in the campaign conversation is that you simply have used up every space in those schools and children would not be allowed at certain grades that were designed. We couldn't have classrooms in those facilities.
Art, I'm sorry, I didn't follow. If you take the highly capable back to Harbor Heights and use the, or the portable, where then are, where is due to the early childhood? I'm just, where they.
They moved from. Their, their home was Harbor Heights.
Right.
And they got moved to the Boys and Girls Club where they are right now.
Right.
They get moved to the Boys and Girls Club on the next floor to the two early childhood rooms at Henderson Bay High School. And they weren't designed.
For early childhood. At the Henderson Bay High School. So that's a nice. Laurie, did you have any questions?
Uh, no, I'm just.
I just.
I'm just talking to you.
Okay, very good.
I. Okay, Dan.
That's good.
Go on.
I think, I guess the reason I'm doing this is I think it's important to try to demonstrate where the growth is throughout the system. There are other places that are growing and shrinking at the bond and Evergreen. And we gain a room or we lose a room, but they're not the ones that we're having to say, I don't have a space for this classroom without, without doing something. Then I just.
I'm sorry, can you please remind me what child find is?
This child find?
Is that another preschool program?
Child find is as the administrator will be asked, each, each year, well, all year, the district is required to do child find, which is to make sure if there are any disabled preschool children from birth through five, that we have a proper child find mechanism there that your parent can contact the district, we can screen the child, and then we can find a service for that child that's in fact qualified for a program. So we do our child find activities in part of those back spaces on that first floor at Henderson Bay.
And how did we measure them before?
They've been probably, they seem to have a different space every year. Years ago, they were housed at Henderson Bay and actually we used classrooms when we have school Fridays week at Henderson Bay. And so that changed and I believe they pushed up to Discovery for a little while. And they're now, they were housed earlier this year on the counseling side at Henderson Bay and came in there periodically with some offices and smaller space to do some of the testing, motor skill testing. When that space, that was, was a big difficulty when we moved there.
And how much room did we take out of that? How much room was necessary for them to do that work inside?
They did leave a lot.
Because how many rooms did we use at Henderson Bay that they carry?
It's the same space on the backside, essentially. If you split that space into three, I believe Henderson Bay is using one of those spaces at the front of two. Child find, some of that is office space because there are school sites, SLT, UTEs, and others involved in that. And the other spaces, more of the motor skill testing space where they're just doing some kind of movement. I'm talking from limited experience, but Mr. Loeys behind me might be able to share more like that.
No, I think. I'm going to actually ask John to come forward to the chair here.
Sorry, John.
This is.
Sorry, John.
And he was making fun of us for sitting there.
Yeah, I think Dan described it fairly well. They don't need a significant amount of space to operate out of office space.
Four.
So they operated out of office spaces before, like John was saying over Discovery. And earlier this year at Henderson Bay, they used a couple of office spaces and open rooms. So about four or five adults that engage in testing and assessment, motor, speech, communication. And they have kids and families come in, they defer assessment, that makes good spot for meeting spaces. So they're pretty flexible and I think if they have, you know, like I said, one or two rooms, they can operate out of that solution. They, it's kind of a luxury that a space that they have right now. They don't need all of that space.
So it's families and children zero to five?
Yes.
And you said they come in, are they currently coming in during the day while students are there? Or are they coming in in the evenings or weekends?
Yes, certainly.
So they currently do have young students that are in Henderson Bay?
Yes.
With this program? And then if it's taking up a classroom or two, the other height at the early childhood, if you're thinking about. And then if it's taking up a classroom or two, um, the other height at the early childhood, if you're thinking about those, is there last room there for them? Yeah?
It, it, it's kind of hard to describe without a picture of it. There's two fairly like three-quarter sized classrooms, and there's a bunch of little spaces that they use to kind of divide up younger kids. So now they
This is on the, this is on the bottom floor. Bottom floor. Cause I was just, I just went toward it, so it's to the back of the
It's in the back.
Okay, I know where you're going.
There's probably ten different spaces back there, and none of them are full-sized classrooms.
I guess what I'm wondering is based on what the needs are of child find and the fact that we need two early childhood classrooms, could they share that space temporarily for two years? Until we can build the schools to create the capacity? And you don't have the answer now, but something you think of. Because if I'm looking at the number of classrooms that we need, and Boys and Girls Club has seven, but the, the early childhood is created in a special, right? You want to make sure those statistics are served properly as well. Is, is, would that be a reasonable solution?
It's been a while since I've been back in that space. I believe they are just two classrooms, though there's some small office space built in. But I think if, if we had our two preschool programs back there, that would take out the majority of that space. So we have to find another solution for the child.
They're very small spaces. I just walked over to Lisa last week with that in mind, and Lisa's input, she's pretty good about that, is that it could work, but it would probably need some modifications.
Because the preschool or the office preschools?
There's two sessions, so a morning session and an hour, so it does run a little bit.
I have a question. When you have child find located in a single location for, for district, how do you reach out and meet the needs of people that either don't have transportation? They don't hear the message, they don't get discovered by? It, it's not possible, I assume, for child find to move around in that magnitude, or just do testing?
So, we do go out to the Cape Peninsula, because we have a session that rotates somewhat, maybe have other modifications. But most of the testing actually takes place in that space at Henderson Bay, but we do go out to the Cape Peninsula for child find. We have church communities here on the city, also. So different locations to have families come in and, um, access.
Okay, don't let the testing out here.
I'm gonna actually kind of put a parking lot on the child find.
Can I go back?
No.
Sheet here already says, uh, 2010, initial building from Cleveland was probably nine classrooms. Does it have nine or seven?
The Boys and Girls Club has nine classrooms. It's not, it's not counted, it's amazing, by the way.
Cause it, someone, let's see, seven, I didn't, no, seven.
We need not, we need seven, well, there's nine at Boys and
Thank you. Just wanted to add a clarification.
I'm sorry?
Say it again, Laurie.
Are, are two of the nine currently being used for the preschool though?
Yes.
So that leaves seven, that was, that means?
Yeah, but we have nine classrooms, two of which, and that's why I'm working for alternate housing for the, the two preschools, because they are using up two of the nine.
Two of the nine, okay.
Right. So, I'm not gonna put just a little bit of a parking lot, some of the, the related issues, but just trying to deal with the number of classrooms. So, you saw the way we were, one of the alternatives dealing with the nine classrooms needed. Then to compound the issue, I took reference, it's not played as detailed, but the fall of 2020, we go again to seven to ten additional classrooms needed. Now, I actually looked at the projections that we have and recognized these are projections for 2020 without knowing, knowing the role of 2019. But the current projection, just rolling the classes through, would suggest we need two more classrooms at Artinville, Discovery, Harbor Heights, and Voyager, and one additional classroom at Moon Creek and Purdy. So, I'm not gonna hang my hat on that and say that's an absolute, we're gonna start figuring it out exactly. But you can see again, the issue that was, why, in some of the conversations, we have been repeatedly talking about a district-wide solution to the overcrowding. That, uh, school number 10 as a choice school would allow us to take pressure off and could draw 550 students from throughout the school system, rather than try it all through boundary changes that would require rebounding all A elementary schools and then have some stretches that simply don't work geographically for the municipal school district. Uh, it's, it's pretty tough to use the extra classroom, uh, Evergreen to, to solve the problem with itself on this side. So, that, the point being is that as you look at one-year solutions for the fall of 19, we, uh, we need to look at, at both the fall of 21, which is where you'll have school number nine complete, you'll have school number 10 complete, we'll have an expanded Artinville, and we'll have an expanded Evergreen. And the combination of the two additional schools, the two expanded schools and the locations of those schools allows us to relieve, uh, the pressure throughout the system, if we've done it properly. So, then I, I looked and went back to the, the pyramid and said, that would take us to level three. Level three is the other option, which would be, uh, repurposed schools or buildings. This is where Henderson Bay really came into the, the mix as a discussion, because looking at both the fall of 19 and the fall of 20, recognizing that all of the level one and level two solutions only got us to, through the fall of 19, that Henderson Bay High School has 16 classrooms. For most of this fall, Henderson Bay was operating in somewhere around 80 to 90 students. I think they were 87 for a couple of months in it, in the world. We had 87 students in 16 classrooms, 16 classrooms at Henderson Bay. Permanent classrooms at Discovery, we have 19 with 620 students. So, that balance simply pushes us into a place of, if we had to repurpose a facility, the one that's right there that, that raises its specter is, can you use part or all of Henderson Bay? Would you have an option to look at alternate housing for Henderson Bay? If they're not using all 16 classrooms? That led us into that step one, which we always take public, and that was to use the first floor of Henderson Bay and just eight classrooms, leaving six for the Henderson Bay. With the, the knowledge that with Henderson Bay, we have, we can control both the intake and theoretically the placement. So, we, we've got control there where we don't have control of the elementary school. So that's how we got, I mean, in a, in a short version, that's how we got to looking at Henderson Bay to solve part of the temporary overcrowding. Using the Boys and Girls Club to get an advanced start on school number 10 and be able to complete that in the fall of 21, which is a year ahead of the fall of 22. What, the one piece I didn't mention tonight, and I know you're familiar with it, is that with the purchase of the Boys and Girls Club and, and number 10 moving into the frontline position, that left Artinville, number nine, number 10, all being completed by 2021, and Evergreen was trailing along behind to be in the fall of 22. At that point, we made an administrative decision to move Evergreen right up to the other three and do all four schools, so if we could work at the fall of 21 and be complete as a, as a picture. So, that increased the pressure on the administration and the planning and, uh, and doing four schools at once instead of having a year in between. And it, it took us to level one, level two, and level three just to survive to, to that point. So, therein is the, the reason that we got to the proposal we did and we, we took it forth under the, the belief that we could in fact open a 160-student school in the fall of 19, in six months, instead of school number 10 taking three years. And that really led us into the discussions, hard choices. What I think I'm trying to emphasize through this whole session with you is that the phrase I used during the campaign, as I was out talking with people and describing it, was we have done this whole very, very deep. We've got every place that you could put a portable, and you can't put more portables. We've got, uh, we've already begun the cannibalization of specialist rooms, and, and we still have a few of those left. And, and you saw what happens to those, and it still doesn't get us to the fall of 2021. So, what I would ask of you is to, uh, well, let me, let me finish, I, I skipped the next page, I'm a trigger. That Henderson Bay has 16 classrooms. We're, and there are options to utilize the nine classrooms of the Boys and Girls Club, or, um, figure out how to switch Henderson Bay and the Boys and Girls Club and use some, some part. That would only be in, I guess, in response to those that believe that younger children and older children didn't make swell. If you were trying to use the right number of classrooms, you could switch the two facilities in theory. I'm gonna, as I say, we'll come back another time with the actual recommendation. My recommendation in that piece, though, I'd, I'd like to say now, is that switching the two and then trying to reconstruct number 10 later doesn't seem like a good way to start a new school. First, we'll trade them out for two years and then we'll pivot back. That, that, that seems like it doesn't work well. So, what I would like to ask of you at that point is a look at the page, I have drawn the bottom of the stack, and it's been a very simple rating. I apologize. You thank me, but I lost my page. It, it says priorities at the top, and it says, it, it looks like this, and it's very simple, but based on what we've just said, and, and only for discussion purposes, not a, a vote for it, but uh, would be, I think, to solve this, we have to identify what's our highest priority. If the highest priority is opening a school number 19, number 10, 2019, and, uh, school number 10, then we'll work out the solutions based on that and we'll work backwards from that. If the highest priority is to, uh, to build a school of choice and, uh, and end up in 2021 with a school of choice, then I'd like to know that, if that really is the highest priority, and be able to work backwards from, from that. If the greatest issue is to avoid housing elementary children with older students, then that needs to factor in. If that's less of a factor, I will, I will certainly work out and say, this is what we need to do in order to solve the housing for the fall of 19. So, Henderson Bay High School, is it available, in your mind, as a priority or not available? I, I think that becomes a priority that you get to give back to me. And, and I use it just for really the beginning of handing to you the next part of the conversation, which is to give me direction on how to come back with this complex puzzle to you and, uh, which you see as the, the priorities you would most like to address. If I've confused everybody in the whole place, I apologize. But I, I realize as we rolled out a plan to just automatically get a school in place in the fall of 19, last, you know, week ago Monday, was not a pleasant one. People were questioning our integrity, they're questioning the motive, they're questioning whether we had any brains. The latter I can admit to, but the first one, uh, we're, we're really trying to do a very good job for the kids and for the families and not, uh, just through lack of planning stumble through this piece and, and just trip on kids and parents and, and start our new schools on the wrong foot, uh, because we blew it two years ago in the, in the So, so with that, I'm inviting the feedback, not to hand you the solution, that's what you pay all of anybody for, to bring to you, uh, some of the complex pieces. And then I can figure out with the staff, how do we go out and do that? What, what timing do we have? If it's the fall of 19, I have less time in the fall of 2021. But I've also delayed, uh, significantly some of the, what we could be doing in the schools. So, now the president, I'll give that back to you with a question for if you could, you could talk to me about individually collectively, what are the priorities? I will take that on myself to sort, I go touch in a position to try to declare. When we bring a recommendation to you, it will be asking for a vote, uh, consensus of word. Right now is just, what can you tell me that would help in figuring this out?
Um, I can see us taking this conversation in a couple of different ways for discussion. Uh, but I think what I'd like to start with is just going around with initial questions and thoughts, and then we may dive into something specific. So, um, Marsha, would you like to start?
Sure. I, um, I have some thoughts, I don't want to go there quite yet. I need to clarify the question answered. I've been making in my mind the assumption that we could put nine classrooms at, um, the Boys and Girls Club, and at the same time onsite could do buildup, which we've done on other occasions many times. And so is that your assumption, Dr. George?
Yes. We can use that school and add the, and put the addition on safely and appropriately, so very much so. One of the first things we, we verified was that that was doable. As with Artinville and Evergreen having construction while we're attending school is entertaining to the teachers as they're trying to corral the excitement. It's noisy, it's dirty, it's, uh, it's not the best thing, but it to me does, absolutely.
Wonderful teaching point.
That it is.
So, anyone with clarifying questions?
That was my, that was my number one. I mean, I have some thoughts about my preferences, but I don't think that's where we are.
Where are we right now? Cause I have plenty of thoughts.
Any clarifying questions before you go, is the thought?
No, there is definitely, first off, I would have liked to have green gasway here tonight. Cause it would have been nice to have asked them some questions directly. I had the same question in my mind that Marsha had. Would school 10 be able to start or be under construction while the school is ongoing? I would like to be able to ask green gasway, because building 10 is already there, the infrastructure's there, the, um, it's not like school nine where it's a forest and we still have to clear it, and I mean, that's a way different situation. I would have liked to have asked green gasway, could school 10 be completed by the fall of 2020? It would have been nice to give that, that, that.
I, I will, I have asked that. If you'd like, yes.
Can I just say something else?
I've seen construction, pretty quickly.
Yeah. I, I can say, once in my career, I got a whole school completed in a timeline that you just described. So I live in that world knowing it's, it's nearly impossible. Like, the hitch will be whether or not in the surveying, the wetlands, the permitting, which are the city of Big Harbor, whether we can speed up the permitting here.
There is a
The issue of the construction can be done relatively quickly because it's an addition and we can make it work. The permitting is the piece that, that people have cautiously to not be overly ambitious, that it will take some, some time. We're fully prepared, in all honesty, we're fully prepared to work with the city and recognize that it may cost us extra with our projects to, to help them staff properly to meet our needs. And we're willing to do that, to get that timing at all possible.
Yeah, I just
We've already initiated that.
Yeah.
We've already initiated that meeting, right?
I love your timing, because I would...
I mean, it would solve a lot of our problems if we could have a way twenty twenty.
But I didn't want to build a house of cards based on it can't be done, but I would have liked...
Yeah. I mean, it'd be nice if the city could expedite their permitting process and let us know what they would need from us to help it happen. So I guess...
Other questions?
Those are two.
All right. Laurie, I'm just going around the room here, so Laurie's here. Laurie, you got any questions?
I do. If school ten was not a school of choice, then I assume we'd be looking at a massive boundary restructuring, correct?
Yes.
And if so, is the consideration to open that with the nine classrooms this fall, and so to basically restructure all of the boundaries by this fall? Do you know what I mean? I'm just trying to get that, if not school of choice.
Making a boundary school is almost impossible, and I don't want to declare impossible and use it this fall to do what would be necessary and really dislocate families. I think we'd be forced into other compromises, that if it was not a school of choice, how else would I get kids into that building, other than boundaries? I thought about that, but it's about two o'clock in the morning, and I'm tossing and trimming. The boundary piece for the fall of nineteen would be almost impossible.
Well, I totally agree with that. I just wanted to be clear with the situation. And my other one, I don't know if this is a question or this is for later, I wish, I would like, in order to clear up the school of choice option, I would like to see, which I think this is happening anyway, more information from, I'd let the board be presented with more specific facts and, you know, how school of choice is done in other places.
Laurie, that was our assumption, that if that stays a priority and as part of the solution for the fall of twenty-one in the short term, then we would come back to you then with a recommendation of how to do that in a way that really engages staff and community, and in a much better way than we were trying to do. I was paying great attention to the fall of nineteen and the timeline, and I just assumed everybody would love it. And at this point, that's, it really was, I apologize for that. So we need to come back to you and the community with, this is the way we would carry that along.
Thank you.
Any others, Laurie? At this time?
No, not at the time. But just to say that I really appreciate the, your spelling out in great scale, the specific overthought situation, I think, for the community to understand how enormous this talent is, like a Rubik's Cube, you know, trying to move, and solve this all across the board, so I appreciate that.
People are better at Rubik's. I can do this.
Okay, good. Leslie?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, I will preface this by saying I have no leanings one way or the other between a school of choice or a non-choice school. I think both have their challenges. I agree with Laurie, we don't know enough about the school of choice to really make that determination. We know that it would help a little bit overcrowding, but what are the other impacts will it have in our district? I don't know what the process has been since the last meeting of how we're addressing it, particularly based on the community feedback. The non-choice school, I understand, would be some massive redistricting, which no district likes to do, it's difficult, it's emotional, however, is that a feasible choice for two thousand twenty-four? I'm just looking at options.
As I blanched earlier, the prospect of trying to redistrict for the fall of nineteen, as I said, it's virtually impossible. It is not impossible, or as you visualize the fall of twenty-one, I think there'll be two issues, one of which is what the boundaries show and what parents are changing. So if my boundary says I'm supposed to go to this school, but it's eight miles down the road, and the one I used to go to is three miles down the road, I may walk and cooperate with the boundary. So, that's been my experience, that I can draw the boundaries, but people don't necessarily have to pay any attention to them, if it really doesn't make sense to them in terms of the neighborhood. But conceivably, you can say, we would hire a demographer, we would go through a fairly sophisticated process of locating every child, every grade, and everything we could put in that mix, and then draw the boundaries that would serve to most member of kids in the closest proximity to the school. Unfortunately, the location, the physical location of our eight schools and the B-ten schools don't lend themselves well to the peninsula's geography. If I could change the geography, move some peninsula's a little bit, create some bridges, and get cars back and forth, so I don't mean to make fun of it, it is conceivable that you could take that time and draw the boundaries, it simply will probably never get you pulling to what you want, which is a balanced kind of schools.
No questions?
No, that was it.
Okay. So, I appreciate how you opened this conversation as a reminder to all of us, and then the board specifically, that as we move forward with the bond, we always knew two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty were going to be painful. We've made choices in our community over the past fifteen years, and we are now dealing with those consequences, so it was a good reminder. And I think, I guess my question is, then, off of that, I think what you're asking of the board tonight is, what things are we okay with in terms of you coming up with how we best will lead to overcrowding for nineteen and twenty?
Yes, and I guess what I hoped to do in that earlier was to give a pretty clear picture of how these elements push on one another. If, in fact, you don't have the Boys and Girls Club for this purpose and use it otherwise, then you have chosen a priority that says, I'll serve this master in this one. So that's what I'm hoping for, is that they gain some sense of guidance, and then bring it back to you with a pretty clear recommendation that says, I think this is consistent with the priorities, it will have a price to be paid, but now, how do we go about that at the gasway possible?
So you don't even need us to say, like, we're leaning towards this, you just need us to say, we won't, this is, we don't want this, we're taking this off the table, and then you'll come back with recommendations.
If you can give me a relatively clear impression that we're going to get, and we're opening, that the opening of school number ten can be delayed a couple of years to begin and do whatever you have to do to take care of the short term, versus really getting number ten to be done and planned and ready to be complete, that would help me know which route I'm supposed to begin to look out that way. So I apologize, I can't untangle those four elements of thought without saying there needs to be a higher priority and a lesser priority.
Okay. So based off of that, if you move discovery students over to Henderson Bay or school ten, how does that then get you room at Voyager, Harbor Heights, and Purdy, which is also, you need classrooms next year?
Repeating, make sure I'm answering the right part.
Yeah, so I guess one of the things that's been discussed is to move students, or which students would you move to Henderson Bay or school ten temporarily, to relieve, because we needed classrooms at Voyager, Harbor Heights, Purdy, and Discovery? I mean, I could easily see discovery students going up there because their bus there, so it's easy. But how do you relieve Voyager, Henderson Bay, and Purdy, or Harbor Heights and Purdy for their classrooms, because they need them as well?
Practically impossible.
Okay. So you vote for...
Eventually, again, it would have complete, no, it served Discovery because Discovery is right next door. And in a weird kind of fashion, you open up more capacity at Discovery. If you had to move students out of one of the other schools, you'd send them over to Discovery, because now you've created a limit at Discovery. So the way I would eventually say, I've got five too many secondary graders at school down the road, send them to Discovery, because I just created space.
Recreating the space.
And you can see, as I say that, it's just painful even when you say it, that's what you would do, that's the only way you could relieve that.
So that then gets doubly challenging then the following year, because you have more schools that need classrooms, Artondale, I think, is added to that.
Remember, I'm retired.
All right, all right. Okay. So, I guess then what Art is asking us to do then is to weigh in on what we see number ten being the fall, when do we see that opening happening?
Can I ask the piggyback over comment, maybe? Just about redistricting, if we were to use the Boys and Girls Club, because it has nine classrooms, and two of them currently being used for early learning, if we were to use that in two thousand nineteen to offset the overcrowding according to this, we need three classrooms for Discovery, two for Voyager, one at Purdy, and Harbor Heights, you have those up, that's nine, so Boys and Girls Club would have the classroom capacity to do the, reduce overcrowding in those schools in two thousand nineteen. Would that, in order to make that happen in two thousand nineteen, is that to fire redistricting, or is that just ask which parents at those schools will be able to have their kids go? Because I wouldn't think we would need a major redistricting just to change two classrooms over to Boys and Girls Club.
Generally speaking, you would not pull up, you wouldn't take a secondary, let's say, from Voyager and put them on the bus and take them over to Boys and Girls Club. So trying to take one classroom and say, that's the Voyager secondary, these two are the Discovery kindergartens, and these, this one over here is Harbor Heights, fifth grade, you generally wouldn't do that. That's why I'd have to have you apply on that says, how do I make this, how do I make this work? But if your priority says, I really want you to use the Boys and Girls Club for the overcrowding, rather than open a new school, I'll come back to you with a recommendation of how it would work.
Because I'm just, that's why I wanted to know that question, because you actually have a classroom capacity at the Boys and Girls Club, right?
I mean, it's pretty simple, I bring it to you.
Yeah. So that was just a clarifying question, so Laurie, hear my comments.
Marcia?
I just want to clarify, if that school is open, and let's just assume that it's a choice, that would be offered to one or two grade levels as opposed to K-12?
I assume the ninth classroom gives us an opportunity, according to the preliminary rule, to say, we would start two kindergartens, two first grades, two seconds, and two thirds, that would be eight. A ninth would be probably a resource school, if it's serving, it's applying to special specialists. So that would be the nine classrooms. We would have the very beginning of the new school, number ten, and the second year, those third graders would become fourth graders, we'd grow it to fourth grade, and the third year, by the fall of twenty-one, you'd have a K-5. So we wouldn't invite students to transfer into that smaller new school in the fourth and fifth grade, we'd start at K-3. And that way, we can start with a smaller student body, we can grow it by the fall of twenty-one, and there will be kids that have then grown into the new school of choice and within that theme in that model. So after we would start, essentially, the K-3. This morning, I talked with Dr. Shannon Harvey, who became the new of our principals, and she was the person that supervised their school of choice that just opened this fall, and she said, if she could have done it, she would start with a K-3 rather than they started with a K-5. The fourth and fifth graders who are transferring into a school of choice don't have the same thought process that kindergarten and first graders are going to be there in a year. So, but it just raises some other issues, but the K-3 works very well.
Okay. And then a follow-up question, and I think you're right, is the school of choice has stereotypes in our minds, I think, in terms of the language that we use around naming what that school of choice is. Would it be possible to have a school of choice that is an academic school, not without any of those really impressed, but that really focus on strong attention to academic? I don't know how to phrase that.
I would phrase it that every school we have. How that focus? In terms of having a school that's, you would see schools of choice out in the rounds under the guise of foreign language or language immersion, you would see them arts, or specifically, it could be music, it could be school of performing arts. It might be a school that is more specialized in terms of the way that academics are presented, project-based, or a learning project. In some places, this one is not intended to be a school of highly capable, which you have to test it, this one is for all children. In some places, you will find that, particularly if it's a larger city, where you might have a school that's highly capable, and they bring them all to the city. But in general, in our case, they really would have that focus of something more of science or...
Follow-up question, because that was probably not a good example, but could you have an imagination destination type of school that is focused on problem solving across the, as opposed to a single upper killer area? And I don't know if that works at all or other schools.
Yeah, I'll have you answer that, but I think what you're getting into is what kind of school of choice, and I think right now, we've got to decide, like...
I know, I just wanted to know, because we have some words around that, and I think we have some sort of stereotypes in our minds.
I think what, I think Marcia's exactly what I mentioned earlier, is that we just don't know enough about the school of choice. We understand that it would be great, and we could have a school, school number ten, where we can draw from across the district, of course, that makes a lot of sense. And so the idea of having a school of choice is how do we get those kids there? It's going to compel them to lead their neighboring home schools, right, in the neighborhood to come in. And on paper, it sounds great, but again, based on the last meeting we had, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered about that.
And I agree, and I think, Art, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you came somewhat with a recommendation last time, and we took a step back from that, but is it my assumption, and I should clarify that, are you coming to the board saying, in order for us to alleviate overcrowding across the district the best, we should look at some type of school of choice or destination, or whatever, where we're drawing kids, just like what Leslie said, from across the district? So with that in mind, I think we should start looking at... Yeah, I mean, yeah, give thoughts on individual preferences for, I don't know, well, then let me ask one more question. Can you open up school ten in the fall of two thousand nineteen with the idea that it will be a school of choice, themed or not themed yet, that we're decided on? Is it feasible that kids would come to that school, knowing in two thousand twenty-one it would be a school of choice of some theme?
I think, I can't answer for all the parents out there who think about it, but I would be, I'd be selling them or saying to them, I'd like you to come to a school of choice, but you don't know yet what it is, and it will be for two years. And I have a sneaking feeling that people would say to me, come back when you know more.
Is it feasible then to come up, in the next several months, come up with that theme, not ready for the curriculum and... not ready for the curriculum and rolling it out into 19, but know that it's going to be rolled out in 2021, but the first two years is going to be traditional?
And I, because at the heart of your question is there a way of phasing, really phasing into this? And the reality is, that's exactly what we'll be doing. We would identify what the theme was of the choice. We will identify a curriculum to get a good start in K-3. But we will be building that curriculum over those next year or two. So I don't need to build the fourth grade curriculum until the fourth graders come along. They will be, and it will be built partially on the fact that the third graders have experienced that kind of curriculum. So we will be adding to that and building it, and it won't be complete in the fall of 19 at all. But it will be complete enough to give us a really good school of choice and a good starting place. I'm not trying to obfuscate or advance around the question. It won't be complete in the thought of what it would look like in the fall of 21. It will be not complete as a curriculum, but it will be well-defined and it will serve through 3.0.
You have a theme, you'd still have to recruit teachers, you'd still have to recruit families based off of that theme. And you'd have some sort of curriculum. You couldn't just teach traditional curriculum.
We looked at, for example, science and math theme instead of something else, was that we have the staff that we could draw from, we have all of the teachers who we could fit in that and we could work with them and support them and make it work. Whereas if we did, I mean, facetious, but if we did Mandarin, that there aren't that many teachers in the district who could do that, so we'd be dependent on hiring from outside. We can't do that. The arts has, we would have a combination of some that would be certainly ready to step in and assist us with an art school. We wouldn't probably have enough staff to draw out of our regular staff. We'd have to figure out how to extend that. So for certain themes, we can do that better for the fall of 19 than we can others where we simply don't have the staff up there.
Can I ask another question? Maybe we'll get it in a different way. When do you need to know whether or not it's going to be a school of choice? What is it? Summer? May?
By the end of March.
And what happens, sorry.
Is it?
But what happens if you push it to mid, mid, and the end of the year?
We narrow down the window of what's left of the school year to work with our staff. Getting a principal up there, getting a principal or a core staff, and then select teaching staff, enable the transfers, and people will think about that. So if we lose about a, if we lose a month or a month and a half in that process, the July doesn't work for us. I'm not having to ask for the staff.
Are you saying mid, mid, and the end of the year?
In terms of just identifying the theme and then being able to recruit a principal, they're looking at probably, I'm going to just say it, at least three weeks to be able to say, this is the theme now, or what would be the leadership that we want for our school. And three weeks would be minimal. Then after that, you're going to, or you're going to be made in that pipeline. And you're then asked, you're just beginning the staffing process. And to some extent, this staffing process needs to be, with the referrals I'm talking about there. If we need to be working hand in hand with the teachers in the other schools. They in turn, if they're going to lose teachers who transferred to the new school, know what they're looking for. And as soon as we come to all of that, the end of June, we've lost really the month and a half. So there's the difference between.
And so what was the staff feedback on this?
We heard there were people who wanted to come, and there were people who said they wouldn't come. It would be too much work. There were people who thought it wouldn't work, and people who thought it was a pretty good idea. We're going to come back to you with that whole feedback and. But one of the big messages there was, how do we work with the teachers so that they fully know what we're planning and what to look for then? And I guess my point is, we can still make it work for the fall of 19, but we don't have a lot of time. And that may just be the priority that says, in that case, we'll delay it.
David?
First off, to reiterate, I think we're really blessed that we are able to purchase the Boys and Girls Club because it puts us several years ahead of schedule for getting that school built. So I think we're very fortunate that we're going to have a conversation about what we're going to put in that nearly three years ahead of schedule. I've definitely heard from members of the community over the past week and or two. I named Fred Meyer, my wife's best friend, as I was walking out of the house tonight, as she was walking into the house, she gave me her two cents. So I've been, a lot of phone calls, I don't know where they come from. So I've definitely heard from the community. I think, you know, I've heard, I've had people say, the teacher's really excited to go to a school of choice in 2019. And having a, you know, wife is a school teacher, that they're going to do everything possible to get their classroom ready to open in the fall of 2019. So I know some people say it's a rush to get it done in 19, but I think if you're a teacher in one of those various themes, you're going to do all you can to get, because, you know, I used to help my wife set up her classroom over the summer, and friends and family are going to help that teacher get that classroom set up. But I'm just making that as a point of a husband married to a school teacher. I think the biggest thing that the people have told me that they're against is that they think opening a school of choice is too soon in 2019. They're not against a school of choice. They're saying that 2019 is too early to get it done. I think that, in my opinion, and what they're saying is that school of choice 2019 is too soon and may not address the overcrowding capacity at the ones that you've outlined, Voyager, Perry, or Rhodes and Discovery. And Brad, Deborah asks those questions about using it for overcrowding. And I think we do need to know if it's going to be a unique school, I'm not going to use a school of choice. But we need to know, because again, Greg Gasol, he could tell us, you know, what architectural differences would there be if it was a school focused on the arts? Or is it a school focused on science, technology, engineering, arts, math? How much different would the school need to be? Would there need to be additional science classrooms, ethernet connections? I mean, what would the architectural differences be? And how much, when would they need to know that, start planning? And then if we used it as an overcrowding school until 2021, while the new school is being built, the kids that are going there in 19 and 20 school, you know, over the next couple of years, they would know that eventually they're going to go back to their other school. But the most, I mean, the biggest thing on here is that no one's against a school of choice. And I talked to, they're just thinking, this falls too soon. I know that we could always move the early learning from the Boys and Girls Club over to Henderson Bay. They do say have a daycare center there, and I never heard any harder stories about the daycare that was coming out of Henderson Bay. I always heard that the students really flourished because they were helping those young students. I mean, I guess there's always, but so for, I mean, if you went, are we supposed to say what we?
Well, actually, what I think I'm going to do is, because I love all this discussion, and I think what we're trying to do, as well as the community, was trying to do is to solve the problem that you guys need to solve. It's really, what you're, the district has to do is listen to feedback, pull up data, and ultimately solve the problem of overcrowding in our district the best way. And so I don't have to make that decision. We don't have to, thank goodness, or of solving it. We have to ultimately make the decision of solving it. So what I think you're asking then is, are we as a board okay with considering a non-school of choice and a school of choice? Are both those on the table? So you don't, you don't want a non-school of choice, or, wait, David, wait, I don't understand. No, what's your no?
I have a reason. Well, my concern is that the redistricting sounds like about as much fun as school closures. And I mean, in fact, I feel that school of choice talks about serving the overcrowding needs with a purpose. And so I think broadening that to what I would say, the theme concept, which includes the arts, without identifying that, it actually is pretty encompassing. I'm not going to, I'm not suggesting that.
What you're saying is, because of overcrowding, you are only looking at a school of, some type of school of choice.
I prefer that. I mean, the redistricting is going to be, these guys are going to have to deal with that. And I will open, I'm open to that recommendation, and I will listen to it, and I will weigh it appropriately. I just, in terms of moving more quickly, and.
We're just giving them parameters to work with. So you're okay with a school of choice, but not a traditional school?
I'm hesitant about that because of the implications it brings.
And that's, and the district.
I'm not opposed to a traditional school, obviously.
What I'm saying is, if the district came back with, we can work with all the redistricting with a traditional school, we'll deal with that. You're okay with either one?
Just tell us, just tell us how you're going to make it happen, and then.
Yep. And David, you said, no, you wouldn't really be open to one or the other?
No, I didn't say that at all. I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm opposed to being a traditional school. I think that it should be a unique school, a choice school, or whatever you want to call it. Hopefully, we can get past that. But what I would like to see is, could it be utilized, School 10, for this school year and possibly next school year, to reduce overcrowding in the elementary schools with the end goal, you know, being a choice school?
Yep. And that's what we're, that's what we're doing.
Okay, so, no, did you mean in 19, choice school, or?
We're going to talk about timing. All we're talking about. All we are, are we, can we do, are we going to entertain a school of choice to help over, deal with overcrowding? So, yes? Laurie, are you okay with entertaining a school of choice to deal with overcrowding in our district?
Yes.
Okay. So we've got that set. You've got that for our.
One part of it, I'm all.
Leslie should forget. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, it's not in the middle.
Oh, I thought you should, yes, that you'd be willing to entertain a school of choice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So now we need to talk about the opening dates. And that may come into play with the timing with school of choice or traditional. David, what I'm hearing, you're saying you're fine with opening school number 10, but not as a school of choice?
Not in 2019.
Okay. And again, we don't have to pull this too.
Can I press that for a little bit?
Yep.
Thank you, that's not, yeah.
What I heard, I didn't miss read that, is you plan a school of choice, but if you had to give up the opening of 19, where you can make sure kids were housed.
Correct. That's right. I, I support a school of choice, but I think that the most important thing was just to house the overcrowded kids in 2019. But the ultimate goal is that it would be a school of choice, but I don't think.
So, so you, your priority would, you know, somewhat on the timing of when you're looking fast in order to do.
It's going to be nice, I hope they can get it open in 2020. But the, but I know, that's why I asked specifically a question, would it require redistricting to have it easy overcrowding? But that's important, is you know I support a school of choice, but not in 2019 is the time.
But that's probably what I'm asking, is whether we can do this, do this.
And I think it's a lot of, our school of choice seems a little very rushed in the fall of 2019. So does that mean School 10 doesn't open?
I'll tell you, I'll come back to you with some flexibility. But I'll know that rather than strive to get the school of choice open in the fall of 19, I will direct some of the energy to, this is the plan, this is the timing, and this is how we'll get there.
But I can, to elaborate, I still think, you know, when you come back with that plan, we would need to know, what side would need to know from the architect, from Greg Gasol, what architectural differences would be, what, and what the board chooses.
I'll try to pull it out and look like, and answer to you is that we'll actually tell them what we want. They'll tell us what's possible, but we'll be defining for them, so if it's a school of, the arts, and you have a mirror for dance, that would be, kind of, you would be describing.
So Marcia, on timing?
Okay. Here's the issue. When we call it school of choice as opposed to Boys and Girls Club as a building, I think we need to differentiate those concepts. And the timing of doing the school of choice, these guys can decide that. I do not think, with the overcrowding that we're dealing with, we need to use that space, whether it's specialty program space or whatever. And, you know, if we have specialists that won't be able to have their own classroom for a year or two, we've done that before. It's not ideal. It's not a popular decision. But again, it's up to these guys to make that work and how they use the space. But I have a hard time if that's going to sit idle as space that can be usable for teaching students next fall.
So you want school, Boys and Girls Club space to be used in the fall of 2019 by students? If it's a school of choice, if it's using overcrowding from the other elementaries temporarily, whatever? You just want it to be used?
Well, and I'm pretty, I'm a lot with David in terms of being school of choice. I would hope that it could be, the problem is, you don't want to be moving people around back and forth year to year. And so I think that's a quite a logistic thing that you guys have to work with. And if you come back and say, I can make it work, no school of choice, we're going to do it this way, I certainly am really open to that.
Yeah, I'm going to move to Laurie. Laurie, thoughts on the timing of what we do in 2019 and/or 2020?
I, I think that, well, I agree with some of what's been said by everyone. I definitely feel we can use it in the fall of 2019, open School 10 at the Boys and Girls Club. As David said, I think it's a gift that we were able to buy this when we, when we did, and that we have the option to have something to use, and we're all in agreement on that. I have, as we've all said and agreed, that we need more information on the school of choice. Can you hear me?
Yes. That's fair.
Okay, so we're all in agreement, we need more information. I definitely need more information. I would say I need a ton of time. I mean, I think the information could be gotten in, you know, one or two, informational meetings or something. But having said that, I do feel strongly that most of the feedback I've received from people, I would interpret as along the lines of, the number one priority is definitely overcrowding, which I 100% agree with. That's why I feel like opening schools, there's got to be a way that we can find to open School 10 where it's available to persons from across the district. And what that, to alleviate overcrowding everywhere, to some extent.
In 2019?
In 2019. That's just my opinion, which is why.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's just my opinion. I don't know what that looks like. And I'm not suggesting, by the way, what we already discussed, like bringing the third grade to one school and the second grade to another, I mean, back. I mean, even if you didn't have all the details, and, because I know the curriculum and the staff took a million unknown details, even if we didn't have all those details worked out, if you could create, name the school, create the, you know, the conduct or the goal of where you're heading ultimately by 2021, get the student body selected K-3. That would be my first choice for 2019, assuming. three, that would be my first choice for 2019, assuming we get more, you know, we need more. My other, you will have another comment, or is it on the...
Yep, no, go for it. Is it on the, on the opening, the timing? Okay, yep.
Well, maybe not. Maybe not, maybe it's not about School 10, so they're on.
Okay. Write it down, don't forget about it, because it'll come up. Leslie, thoughts on timing of School 10?
Well, I agree, Marshall, it absolutely should be utilized in 2019. I think it's up to the district to determine, based on this conversation, what it's going to look like, and I look forward to that information. I am going to ask that, particularly around the school of choice, I want to see a clear logical pathway to how we can action, and I find it very inclusive. And I look forward to seeing that information in our next study session.
The 14th? No, it's a study session. The 14th is a study session.
Next week.
Yes, next week is a study session.
Next week's a board meeting.
It's a study session. We have two study sessions in a row. Okay. So I think I'm hearing a common theme with the opening of School 10. With that in mind, and I don't need to know if you are highly against it, a little bit against it, whatever, Henderson Bay, will we allow, are we okay with having younger students in Henderson Bay?
I'm open to that.
And I know that was what your second thing is, so to start.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So Laurie, are you okay with having student, uh, young, pardon?
I think we need, I want to...
Okay.
I would say to start what I'm about to say, that I think every one of us in this conversation tonight wants the best possible school experience for every single child. I think that's the whole reason, well, you know, in this conversation. I think the easy thing to say and form that end would be to leave Henderson Bay alone, and to allow it to do its thing, and, you know, be a great space for those kids. What I cannot responsibly get past, I figured, I just wrote them down again, Art gave us, you have 19 classrooms that is covered with 620 kids, I know it's portable on top of that, but 19 permanents, and you have 16 permanent classrooms with 80 or 90 kids at Henderson Bay. And I just think it's just, I'm not saying I'm for this or against this, but it's just, it's our duty to make sure that our assets are being used in the most responsible way. And so it says, looking at, which is, I think, the point of why we're talking about it. And if we aren't looking at it, as you guys already know, I've told you this before, I think it would be great to hear from someone else who is, you know, has done, has been there in the district, let's go beyond that.
Having mixed grades?
Yes, having mixed early learning and young children with an alternative high school, with actually phenomenal success for all of the persons involved. I think it would be great for us all to hear from them and get more information. So I'm not, or any, I do think, though, that it's irresponsible for the district to just not consider that building, and always using it in the best way for the most of the students, you know?
So if the district were to come back with a recommendation with using Henderson Bay for some other reason than just Henderson Bay, you would want to understand how other districts have made it, how it worked, you would want to understand the data behind it in that presentation?
Exactly. And I'm not at all saying I'm, you know, my concern obviously is for, I don't want Henderson Bay to feel slighted. I'm speaking simply as, you know, about the reconsidering of, I'm just speaking to the tier numbers in the district assets, we just may make sure we're doing the best thing for the most, you know?
I think it's...
Because the concept, I'm actually not, I wouldn't personally have trouble sending my young child there for school, but I could just make, you know, the other concept, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Leslie, how do you? David?
I would agree with everything Laurie just said. I think that the fact that there used to be, I mean, there's no kids in Henderson Bay right now, and I'm not hearing any kind of things, exposed to things going on there. Used to be a childcare center there, or daycare center there before, and same thing. I know sometimes, you know, the kids at Henderson Bay, you know, have a stigma attached to them because they're going there, but I think all high school kids have some issues. Different kinds of issues. So I personally think that maybe, don't laugh at me, you know, pray for me, don't laugh at me. Maybe we move the early learning from the Boys and Girls Club over to Henderson Bay to give us a couple extra classrooms at the Boys and...
I know, we're not solving it, we're just, are you okay with having...
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying, for me, because we already have young kids in Henderson Bay, we've had them there in the past, and just six years up there on the board, I haven't heard anything really, really bad about it, I would support having young kids there.
So what I'm hearing is, we are okay with using Henderson Bay as putting other students into the school in addition, now my next question is, the students that are there now, Henderson Bay students that are there now, we want them to be as well, get their best experience. Are we open if the district can find another location for them, either in 19 or 20, that would feed their program better, or would better suit them? Are we open to having them at a different location?
I'm listening.
And I don't even know if that's an option, but I know...
I know too much about the history of Henderson Bay, trying to find a location for them, even so.
Yeah, and I don't know if there is another location, but if the district were to find a good location...
That's my answer.
Well, first off, I think I prefer, at least in the 2019 school year, that Henderson Bay be left alone. But I'm, that's why I brought up the early learning, that I don't have a problem with young kids being at Henderson Bay High School. Ideally, we could leave Henderson Bay as it is in 2019, and then if the School 10 isn't complete in 2020, we could revisit the Henderson Bay issue, but I, I'm just going to leave it at that. I think if, as much as possible, we leave Henderson Bay this 2019 school year, 20, and then revisit that in 2020.
So you would like Henderson Bay to be left alone now, for this next coming year?
If possible, if possible. And again, what's best for the district, but I think if we can leave it alone, that would be ideal, but I'm not opposed to whatever the school is going to put.
Okay, so...
Did that make sense?
It totally makes sense. No, you would like it to be left alone, at least for 2019, but if the district came back and said, the best way to service our district across the district, and these students will service this way, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, these are all tough questions, but, Leslie?
I am open to having that conversation, however, I'm going to echo something, I'm going to misquote you, Laurie, I'm sorry. But I think that we all want what's best for our students, that includes our secondary students. So with that in mind, as long as the district continues...
Right, that was my point.
Yeah, right? Right, actually, we're... And I think that, I agree. So I think that if the district continues to be student focused, I'm interested to see what they come back with.
Good.
Yeah.
Art, would you really look at the list to see if there's other things that you need parameters on, or do you feel pretty good?
I'm very comfortable with, I deeply appreciate what I've just tried. This gives us enough to say, our job is to come back to you and try to address the changes for, you know, a whole lot of information from you. So I would hope that you would be discussing that. But I love David, I love it all at 2019.
To David's point, again, keeping overcrowding in mind, that's the biggest thing, this is what this bond was solving, bringing in feedback from the community, bringing in teachers, bringing them along the way, it's all a lot in process, coming back with the recommendation, and that's going to come back next...
Week.
Week for food for thought, and then probably no decisions until the end of March.
Most probably. Unless there's some magic that occurred by next week, and they don't have, they don't have too many days to work it out, it's probably not too much pressure.
Okay.
Don't retire on some.
No.
Anybody else have thoughts or things that they like in districts that you thought as they are making these recommendations?
My second question. Well, I was going to say that I really appreciate the conversation, I appreciate the information. Also, as you gather information, don't be afraid to send it out long ahead of time for the next study session, just saying. So it doesn't all have to be all at once, you can bring us along the way, just like you do with your students, right? And the important thing is that we have a broader discussion in the company, correct? So similar to what we do with the competition, we all have our opportunity to review it, ask questions, make any decisions. So as long as we don't feel like it'll pass out all at once.
Laurie, anything else?
The only other, I'm just looking at this list of priorities that Art warned us to address, and if it wasn't clear, the only thing I want to comment on is that the concept of moving Henderson Bay High School to a completely, some other facility, I feel like that is above my favorite. I mean, I know you were totally, I think, speak for that, that's how it happens, you know, so, it's not like that, I have no, I have no, I have people in mind to agree with David, which would leave them, I have to get it towards the fall of 2019. For what, okay.
So I was just going to say, the people on the line, and my wife's best friend, and they all make comments about different things, but still, the number one thing they said, it's a matter of trust, the perception of trust of the school district. I think we, the school board over the years that I've been on, has fought hard to build the trust within the community, that finally allowed us the past of a month. So I think that's super important. And that's why I think it's nice that Art opened his comments tonight with the fact that intent and school district intent was to do what's best for our kids and our school district, and their intention was not to break the trust of the community. So I think that hopefully this discussion tonight, and the fact that we walked, you know, walked it back a little bit to have more topical discussion, will let the committee know that we do care, that we have heard them, that we are, we're taking into consideration the trust that we've built up over the years, so, that came out right.
And I thank you, the opportunity to listen first and get feedback, not a line in the sand, but I thought this has been a very thoughtful discussion and wide-ranging, and so I appreciate it, and all of us, as a result of this.
Okay. Well, this is a very, all these are exciting things to be thinking of. I'm glad, like everyone has said, we're taking some more time to discuss them, get more feedback, get more discussions with teachers, more buy-in. Funny thing happened today, that it's just a simple, simple thing, but it was a huge lesson. The district communicated the decision to delay the schools two hours today, and they put all their thought into why we did it, and this is why, and here's the decision. Guess what? I had so many people compliment that. So I think if we, again, very simple issue, but if we put that to how we present this, why we're making these decisions, ultimately looking at overcrowding, I think our community will have that trust for us, so, have fun.
Please make this news.
Okay.
This internet's been two and a half hours since we started, should we take a short break? Because we still have two more things on our gin, and some of the folks nowadays might want to leave, and maybe they want to chat with us for a minute or two before they do that.
I think it's a great time for a break, but just to clarify, I think we finished 5.2 and 5.3 with that discussion. So we only have board metrics, but yes, we're taking a break at, according to that clock, 8:27, and we will reconvene at 8:35. Seven, well, how long do you want? Okay, with 5.4, board goals and metrics. And I'm turning it over to you, because you're talking about it. So Art, take it over.
There are three documents in this next section, there are actually more than that, so there are three busy documents. One is entitled, The Peninsula Promises. The second is one you would recognize more than I, it has goal one, I mean, it is a set of goals that the board developed last spring, working with a WADA consultant. And the third document is one you would recognize even more, and that was the strategic plan for 2014, 2018 for the Peninsula School District. And those, if I may, I'd like to walk you through somewhat briefly each of those three documents, and then talk about how the, what the intent of the evening is. So, Peninsula Promises is at this level, at this point, what I would call a cabinet-level document. A cabinet-level document that has been developed and trying to answer the question of, rather than a whole set of independent decisions that are made in the district office and programs and people, what are we working towards? What is our goal? What is going to be our decision matrix by which we can determine? And a very brief introduction to this Peninsula Promises is first to give credit to Allen Young School District, it was built on a model that's in Allen Young, who's stealing liberally from their four man up in the area, the authority of the Peninsula. I would go through line by line, because I love some of these lines, and we wrote them and adapted them. But in short, it's a document that starts to say, do we know where we want to go? Do we know what our students will look like if we get there? And what are the ways we're going to accomplish that? So when you look at this part of the document, it says, we will accomplish this through, and then there are some blue bubbles. There is an opportunity there for a bridge, and that's an, at this point, an internal document that could go any number of ways. But the bridge could very easily, at my estimation, bridge to the board's effort that you started last spring, on what are the goals and the objectives for the Peninsula School District. And those goal statements are yours as you develop them. I wasn't here last spring, so I don't know the conversation that we're on.
Yeah, this isn't what we developed, actually.
Well, that was given to us, I think...
That's not right. Will my all, where does this come from?
This is for... So I sent, I had something that we had developed, and it was May 22nd...
See, I wasn't here.
Yeah, May 22nd, I sent you, and I don't know who I sent it to now, so my apologies, but there was, from what I got, it was the end of the meeting, was six goals, so we didn't have all this objective. It was, there are a version of these, but we adopted, or we added diversity, we...
Believe it or not, that doesn't really throw us off.
Okay, good. There you go.
The reason I can say out of confidence is that the part that's missing here is the part that you know best, it's what you did last spring. I'm guessing it, and I'll edit it in the packet. The point I wanted to make in just introducing that was that whatever that works like, and whatever it was, if you looked at that and said, we start with this document I call Peninsula Promises... Promises, and you look at the document, the where this one ends and we will accomplish this through is the mechanism by which would be the bridge to the goals and objectives we support. And I believe that we're entirely capable of figuring out what that bridge would look like, of how do we take the work that you did, honor that work, but bridge it to the work that's ongoing daily, and then the goal being that while we're not doing a full-blown strategic plan to replace the one that expired in 2018, we could use that same model of metrics and portfolio issues to take the two sets that we have in the marriage and then also set up a plan by which we're actively working towards what you would want us working on, as well as actively working on what the cabinet, all the people, Chris and his department, who knows exactly where he's tying in with the work that's being done. As we talked, a couple examples, this fall, we identified the big picture at Henderson Bay, but where did it come from and where did it tie in? Who decided it was a mechanism? It only knows throwing rocks that way, and in some way, we didn't have that block that we knew this was where we were going, this is what it represented in our scheme, and this is the objective and how we're going to measure it. Another example of that could be the decision to go one-to-one devices, support devices in the hands of kids. There was nothing wrong, it wasn't, they didn't come out of a dark closet, but neither was it tied in and supported wholly with your goals as a board, or your knowledge of what we were doing, or what we were doing, and our knowledge of what was next and what was required. So without belaboring that, there are a number of examples that are, who are doing really good work and good things, but they're not connected with something that would either be the goals, or the Peninsula Promises, or a strategic plan. So the hope is to fix that, the hope is to build those connections. The discussion that would have to take place, if I have the right document to find you, is that you could begin to say, this is where that document, or part one of it, or part two, or, except there were six pieces, where they could or could not tie back to the way that we want to go about our decision matrix. Lastly, and believe it or not, I quit on that part of the study groundwork, is we're going into an entirely new levy that's designed around enrichment, we're going into a levy that is lowered in terms of the amount of money. We have to be really, really careful that what the decisions we're making and the choice of our resources leads us to the places we want to go, and be able to walk away from some things that would be good, but they're not the ones that we chose to take us to the places we want to go with this, and make choices that are hard choices. You were doing that really earlier and just trying to respond to me on building your buildings and how, what are the priorities? Now, in terms of this work, I think it's absolutely critical that we, we can't reach back anymore to Karen and say, take some more money out of the levy for this, because we just decided to do that, without knowing what else we would have to take from. So whether it's a question of equity, whether it's a question of performance or discipline and gender or other issues, whether it's innovation, if you see on the bubbles, you'll see something that says innovation, options and choices. Does that fit with the school of choice, with the school of choice fit with what we're trying to do? If the answer is yes, we have a passive understanding that this is going to happen, it's a chosen way, a pathway. If the answer was no, there's really no place here, it's a great idea, but it doesn't tie in, the answer is no, we may not do that at this point, we may have to change that, or at least if we do, we're going to have to go back and figure out if that bumped something else or. So that's my approach to you, to say as we look at the, a surrogate for strategic planning, not starting the whole world strategic planning, use what you developed last spring and adapt that as necessary, tie it to the Peninsula Promises if there is a reasonable way to do that, create the decision matrix that we're building that, and then create the metrics that we'll be able to report to everyone, this is what we're doing and how we're going to successful. So that's my presentation.
Okay, well.
Apologize for the long time.
That's okay, but I think there is a question as where that document is.
What is this document?
I remember Rob bringing us and saying, you guys are going to need to look, just figure out.
This is it.
I apologize.
I have to get one, I just found it.
We didn't talk about any numbers or.
There's a lot of emails this past week trying to find it.
This was the one I was looking for.
I know, like, when we were talking about the metrics, those were going to be added, but we thought the goals and objectives were what we got.
But there were six goals, I think, so maybe this is a part of it, or maybe that is, it's a piece of it, but I don't, but what threw me is, all of this stuff is, we didn't have it, this in our discussion, we have this stuff.
Brooke and I claimed to be the new kids on the board.
Do you have it?
I do, I just found it. So Rob sent it to us on Jim 20th.
So if you, the other goals are probably goals that are like, can you put enough more HR and finances? If he emailed it to you.
I've been waiting.
Can I make a comment? I thought we were at the place when.
Here's the brainstorm.
I was on the impression that we were at a spot, a stopping spot, that Rob was then thinking where we were at, back to you to get your input, and then you were going to come back like a month later after the district, that you guys met with the district and you all brainstormed, and then you all were going to come back with some of this stuff? So I don't think we just, we never were privy to the next step. So I think that from where we stopped, we sent, we sent Rob back to you to develop some of this, and we just, unfortunately, it's just, we never got any.
Sorry, I think what happened in Chris and China, we started going through and seeing evidence of some of the measures that we tried to brainstorm here, and where we got stuck was, we felt like there was this missing piece of characteristics of the kids that we want, that were going offstage at the end, that we're missing from this. And so that's where Rob talked about some other ways of looking at that, and then we started brainstorming some things like that, and that's where, I'll give an example from, from this example from the other page where it says, we develop students and graduates who are, there's those bullets, you see things on there like caring, compassion and compassionate views. That we didn't see in this, and so then that started a whole big discussion about, well, if you're going to put something like that in your plan, how are you going to measure it? So we started researching that, and what other districts are doing to do that, and some of these examples, some of that in there, but that's where I remember it, Chris says, yes, or, that's where we kind of got stuck, was we felt like there was this big missing piece about, maybe you might want to call them soft skills, that weren't in this plan, and we felt like we were going to come back and say, here's what we're going to measure, we wanted to kind of make the pitch to you that maybe we needed some more of those skills, and here's a way you can measure them.
You without knowing any about, you got me, and then screwed off.
And I remember.
I know, it gets screwed up, it's just not, it's not all good.
Well, just to add. Back to the last strategic plan session, Rob did a presentation, coming back from a conference that day, I think he went to U of M, and it was a portrait of a student, that's the first time we had heard that.
And the big idea of that is what I just described, that there's characteristics of graduates that we had to talk to.
Right, because I remember us having that conversation around soft skills and, you know, how do we measure the soft skills and, you know, to be able to have data behind it, you know, it's sort of hard to measure soft skills, you know, so.
Right, so if you, if you want to look real quick to take into my question, what other districts are looking at? And I looked at Seattle, D.C., Bellingham, all of them use a tool called Panorama Ed to give surveys that track like over time, so you like ask fifth graders a question about compassion or responsibility or persistence, something like that, and then you ask them again as seventh graders, and you ask them again as ninth graders, and you track that over time, are they still feeling like their classmates are compassionate, or whatever it is that the question is being asked, and so you can track that over time.
But we know none of this, John, so if you have this information, we'd love.
So again, so.
That's why I want this one to reset.
I can read lots of that, I'd love to.
Hold on.
Yeah, I think we're beyond you.
I was just saying, I think we need to look at a little bit, or a lot. And so when I look at these documents, what I see is Peninsula Promises the lens that we use in order to ensure that our kids are being served by this is the heart, right? The goals and objectives tell you, this is what the board is looking for, and the district report card is that those are the outcomes that we want to see, but all of these things are one of the lens, right? I think that the goals and objectives still need to be looked at, and I think it should be adapted. I've been through a lot of equity university training since we started this, there are some data that I think the board needs to see before we address the goals and how we need more to shape them, not only to give the district direction, but also support, right? There's a balance here. And because things that are not gained are not prioritized, and they are not counted. And as Art said, you know, we have some uncertain highs ahead, and I think that that focusing that you have taught us since that will go on, I think it needs to happen, but I think we need another clear logical path to get there, and where do we start?
So what I think I'm hearing is that we've, the board set some goals last spring, we now potentially have that document, is that right, Chris? We have, so that sounds like that needs to come back to the board, and we need to relive those, are these the same goals that we want to move forward with? And it's so, do we then want to look at what Art is proposing here, and as Leslie points it, and we viewed it as well, kind of the lens, and do those goals then fit, and how do they fit into this? And then from there, we go to what John's talking about, is how will we measure that and what are different ways? So this is step one, going back and looking at our board goals?
I think that step one is that we need to reflect back and look at what kind of student are we looking for when we look at these goals, first of all, and what are the outcomes that we're looking for? So the goals, the goals can be the goals, the lens can stay the same, right? The lens, this is what you're using as sort of that guideline, but the board goals should not adapt to the lens, the goals are separate.
Okay.
I think that there's a way that we can make it work, that makes more sense, but I think that there needs to be further research and discussion, and again, there needs to be a plan of how we're going to approach it. And in my mind, the goals come first, because that's where everything sort of comes from. That is what, that is the direction for the board.
Okay.
John, we did work on developing goals and strategic planning, we did not adopt those as board.
No, we did not, so just saying, are we, do we want to go back before we adopt?
That's a link.
Because we are now, 2018 is beyond us, do we want to go back and look at those goals?
Right.
Repress them, adopt them, but I, what Leslie's saying is, we want to look at it, and Art is proposing is that we look at those goals with this lens though, right?
You can, but you don't, you don't need to, I think these are, these are, Peninsula Promises is a really great component to it, there's probably some tweaks that I would probably want to put out there for discussion. However, before we do that, I think there needs to be more information, and we'd like to have a clear plan of how we're going to look at it, so.
Look at what?
How we're going to look at all of this.
Okay.
Do you want to?
Nope.
Okay, so, so in my mind, I think that we need to look at our goals and objectives, does this reflect the values of what the board wants to see for a Peninsula School District? Does it hit all the high notes of where we want, of what we think is important for the district to come up with, to get to the outcome that we're looking for, which is a success, right? Does that make sense?
Do you have thoughts?
I thought with the, during that step, that we'd come back to the board with a half-page or one-page process by which step one is to do this, step two is to do this, step three, and step four, and here is the formula, and each of those steps will spell out a review of the goals, not in bold, and any process by which we look at, I mean, we had to review, looking at missing pieces, take the step two, simply then, tell it to we, give ourselves a timeline with expectations, so I think, I know we can bring that up, you have kind of a time to look at it.
Yep.
Since I didn't bring the word up, I don't feel bad for bringing it up, you mentioned the enrichment levy, and since we're not sure yet what's going to happen with the state budget, and I know that the enrichment levy is going to be coming up quickly, at what point do we as a school board need to start having a discussion around when we want to do the, run the enrichment levy? Is that, is that due next year, right? Because we, we won't, so like, once the legislative session is out, we don't really have any extended sessions, now that certain people are running for president and have time for that, but I just wanted to know when we as a board need to start looking at what our enrichment levy is going to include that might factor into our board goals.
I know.
That was for Karen, so, sort of for Karen.
So our current levy expires in 2018.
Right.
So in one more year, will we need to start developing our next levy?
Right.
Typically, what we've done in the past is we form a task force, we're a committee to work on the, what we want to put into the levy, we educate folks on what's currently in the levy, and we would have to do the same type of process, I imagine, and then we would, there's an additional step we have to do now, now, once you have created a levy, you have to have it approved by OSPI.
Right.
Then you bring it before your board as a proposal, and we would probably report out what we come up with, so that it was in the truth that we would then make prior to submit to OSPI, we could do that.
Right.
And then, once we get the approval of OSPI, we could create the resolution, because the ballot must be approved.
And since I brought it up, because we're going to have a lot on our plate, and all the other stuff going on, plus the strategic, plus the strategic plan is back on our plate, and so the levy runs out in next year, so we would have to pass the ballot measure next year in order to continue, in 2021. And so based on history with this board, when we typically run a levy measure, we would need to start having some conversation around that fairly soon.
Well, and I don't think that those conversations are mutually exclusive, and frankly, school funding is what it is, lately it feels like, just don't know what it's going to be from here to here. However, these goals and objectives outside of the strategic plan, these goals and objectives help prioritize and frame how that money is going to be spent.
I agree with you.
So I think that all of these conversations need to happen, but for now, I think Dem and Art can talk about agenda, to see where that's going to fit, and it's Karen, of course, appropriately, but let's stay focused on what's on the agenda for tonight.
Interesting enough, it will lead directly from just the enrichment, what is it, we're trying to enrich, and there we go, spend the levy.
I think they tie in, that's what, I think, I'm sorry, I think our agenda, our, tonight about the strategic plan and that we have an enrichment, the enrichment levy is going to be helpful to, because you mentioned some things we may not have money for, and because of what the enrichment levy is going to solve, I think that's.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same page, what I think Leslie's saying and Art is proposing as well is, in order for us to come up with that levy plan, it would behoove us to have these goals in place, to know that we're supporting, financially supporting these goals as well. So unfortunately, we have three meetings a month, we have a lot of work done, so that's why we have three meetings a month.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Yes, no, it is true, I just brought it up. So Lori, we haven't heard from you. So Lori, we haven't heard from you. She's sleeping. She's sleeping. Oh, yeah. Do you have any questions, thoughts, or anything right now in terms of the goals, objectives, and what we've been talking about?
I have no questions, because I, it's probably less confusing for me, because I wasn't here at the start.
All right, are you okay with the proposed plan of having?
I'm not there like Art with the wrong document.
So are you okay with Art coming back with the proposed plan on how we move forward with this, and how that ties into then, yeah, developing our enrichment levy?
Yes, that'll be great.
Okay, good.
Onward and upward.
Onward and upward.
My question, where did the Peninsula Promises, is that the Ballin have used?
The document, there is something called the Ballin, I always call this the Promises. And then, if you compare the two, you'd see, you'd see the direct heritage, but you'd see a lot of word changes that now reflecting.
But we didn't have, like, strategic school.
They're, they're just trying out board governance, district, and so they refer to it.
Okay. So, Art, Leslie, you had any other comments on that?
That's it.
All right, we will adjourn this meeting at 9:05 p.m.